Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Kelly, the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We're here for a committee of the whole related to the proposed legislative platforms for Johnson County, Kansas. I know for the record that all commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner Fast, are here for this committee of the whole. We will hear a presentation from Erin Nguyen regarding the state and subsequently the federal platforms, and then have an opportunity for discussion and direction on the same. So without further ado, at this time, we welcome Ms. Nguyen.
There we go. Joined virtually by Zach Israel and Courtney Miller from Ferguson Group. And I also wanted to quickly shout out before we dive in, we have a KU NPA first-year student here with us today. This is Jill. She's interning with the city of Leewood. We got coffee several months ago, and she just expressed an interest in learning more about intergovernmental affairs and the legislative process, which is just frankly not something that's particularly covered in our traditional NPA education. So really happy that she's here and can learn from you all and your discussion. All right. So we're going to start with the state legislative platform, reviewing the proposed action priorities, any proposed changes, and then we'll talk briefly about the Big Five County Joint Platform. Then I would say we pause for discussion before we head into the federal platform. Any questions on process before? All right. And it's not letting me click. Can we get some more Taylor Swift commentary while we?
We are on the record.
There we go. Let's see here. All right. Before we do dive in, I wanted to propose kind of a few guiding principles to ground this discussion and the overall legislative work. First and foremost, that our, you know, our strong economy and our quality of life really are the result of strong intergovernmental collaboration. And that's why we do this. I think the goal is to map out very specific ways that we can work together to make life better, you know, for our residents. So to that end, I think that what I'd really like to lean into this year is our collaboration with the other Big Five counties in Kansas, identifying very tangible, I think, realistic opportunities that improve both our services but also our partnerships with the state. Secondly, I think leaning into public education just around intergovernmental cooperation, what role the state, the federal, the city, the county, the school district governing bodies play in creating the quality of life in Johnson County. The second principle, begin with the end in mind, and this is the idea of for each initiative, for each policy, really thinking through who is best positioned to lead, who is best positioned to support, and when we can join in with others to do that, to show a unified statewide impact. Last, but certainly not least, establishing and continuing to strengthen our credibility. So focus on enhancing our relationships, leading with data and real impact. And the third that I think has really been the guiding factor in the proposal of the action items is taking advantage of momentum. Where are there opportunities where legislation already exists, has already been drafted, where there are legislators who are already identified as champions, that we can really come alongside others to drive change this session? So with that, let's dive into the state action priorities. And I will note, I have them numbered here for my reference. In no way is that meant to convey order of importance. I would look to you all for direction on which of these is first among equals or which really should get the lion's share of our priority. So the full text of each is in the red line document that was attached to your packet. For the sake of brevity, I'm just going to hit the highlights here. The first priority is a carryover from the last several platforms, expanding our tax relief, I'm sorry, the state's tax relief programs for lower-income adults. There's been some movement on that. In 2024, there was, the House and the Senate did pass increasing home valuations and maximum income. Unfortunately, it was bundled together with a whole lot of other tax provisions and ended up being vetoed by the governor. Last year, in one of the programs, social security income was exempted. So a win for sure, but I think the feeling in talking to both this body and the Commission on Aging is that there is still significant adjustment to be made if we really want to expand the number of eligible Johnson County residents. So there is some good conversations about this with the members of our delegation. Essentially, I think the challenge is, how do you get it so that it expands eligibility in Johnson County while not making every single resident in other counties eligible, right? So how could you set some sort of data set that would refresh annually that could serve as a benchmark? So maybe that's your area median income, medium home valuation, and then if you make it more complex and refreshed on an annual basis, what does that do to the administrative burden at Cador? So all conversations that we're having, but I do think there's some bipartisan interest in really making a push on this one. Second, another tax item, this will be a hot topic in Tax Committee this year. So currently, the general countywide sales tax, that half cent, is apportioned according to a formula where half of it is divvied up based on population and half of it is divvied up based on mill levy. So what this means is that if your mill levy lowers, so does your share of sales tax. If your population shrinks, so does your share of sales tax. And for the county, we only get credit for unincorporated population, even though we provide services countywide. So we are actually, because you have lowered the mill levy seven out of the last nine years, and our unincorporated population continues to shrink, so then does our piece of sales tax. It has been pretty unanimous in both House and Senate tax, that mill levy should be removed from this equation. You should not be punished for lowering your mill. There is consensus there. There is a lot of other conversation around, well, what do you divide it up on then? Is it point of sale? Is it assessed valuation? Is it appraised valuation? What I would propose right now, we're working closely with House tax and with Sedgwick County, actually, to provide some thought leadership on this. I think that we advocate for a fair and transparent formula that does not punish lowering the mill levy, but also, I think, gives county government credit for the populations that they serve. Again, do not know how that will shake out and the details, but there is momentum there, and I do think some sort of change is coming. The third, it is no surprise that we have some funding issues in the DMV. This past week, no, this week, this Monday, the Legislative Post-Attic Committee met and heard the report on just how much county governments and local tax dollars are subsidizing state functions. We are working closely with a coalition with the Big Five County elected and staff leadership and the Kansas County Treasurers to propose a bill in partnership with Senator Chase Blasey, who's House Majority Leader, that would do a few things. Most notably, one, fix the five-year renewal cycle. So you would not have to have everyone with a special personalized plate renew the same time, but rather it would set on when you got your plate, five years from registration. So seems like low-hanging fruit that has some bipartisan support. The second component, which has support in the Senate, there's some educational efforts that are needed in the House, is to allow counties to add a fee, the range being from $5 to $15 locally controlled, and this would be on top of, so it would be no revenue away from the state. This would be additional money that's being paid by the customer. And the consensus has been with both the Treasurers and working with the state Majority Leader, that the needs are different across the state. The labor market's different, the cost structures are different, so having that ability for you all to set fees that allow us to provide the level of customer service that Johnson Countyans expect. So we'll see. We'll see where that goes. Hopeful. The last proposed action agenda item is a package of housing legislation. Commissioner Brewer referenced this a little bit earlier, was highlighted at the UCS Public Policy Forum. This is part of a bipartisan, bicameral effort to protect renters in Kansas, specifically being championed from Johnson County by Senator Doug Shane, whose district contains the Aspen Place Apartments that were condemned earlier this year. That was really his motivation for putting forth this piece of legislation. So high level, it includes a rental registry, so that means that we would be able to see, we as in the public, who owns which property. There would be clear transparency and accountability. So when you had an issue, when there was a maintenance issue or a broken water line, you would be able to quickly get in touch, or at least you would know who to call. A big component of this is also addressing eviction. So taking the current status or the current process for evictions in Kansas, we're the third fastest state in the country for how quickly between eviction is filed and you are out of your home. So there's a lot of improvements that are being considered there. One of the ways that we have been able to weigh in is education on the eviction mediation program, which is not contemplated to be, of course, required for anybody, but to be encouraged as another alternative for folks that are housing vulnerable. There is, I have a handout that goes into way more detail about all of these proposals that I'm happy to share with anyone interested, or send you a copy via email. Something that is not on the action list currently, but I would like to discuss, in light of, in the interest of taking advantage of momentum, community corrections has been in the conversation in Topeka the past six weeks. I think that there will be movement this session on continually, continuing to review the funding formula, modernizing other areas of the Community Corrections Act, and addressing juvenile placement, particularly out-of-home youth placement. So I would, wanted to pose to you all for consideration to add specific language that kind of gives the charge to myself, to Robert, to Mike Brower, to the District Attorney, to work together, to really have a seat at the table with legislators and the Department of Corrections as these changes are being considered. How about we pause there and discuss the action priorities, and then we can go over a little bit more of the editorial, smaller changes that are in the rest of the document?
Well, that sounds fine to us. Ms. Nguyen, thank you very much for your work on this platform and for the work that you've done in coordinating the Big Five Caucus. The ability to work together with partners gives us the best opportunity to have items actually reach an outcome, especially in a short session. So I appreciate the quest for partnership and applaud that. Specifically, I have no qualms about the four action priorities that were presented to us. I'll note, number one, expanding tax relief. I understand the rationale for including low-income older adults. I would hate to miss an opportunity to expand tax relief for anyone and everyone, but understand and appreciate your explanation of the rationale behind prioritization for low-income older adults during this session. Though we encourage the state, or I believe we encourage the state, to expand tax relief opportunities for all. But overall, all four of these are definitely something I would hope we support. And then on the item for discussion, community corrections, I'd be curious to see how quickly we could move in getting that put together, understanding that it is an evolving process with a statewide committee that made recommendations. that made recommendations for the funding formula and pushback from others in the state. How quickly could we, as a county, come around language so as to include that as a priority area?
I'm going to volunteer myself and others. I think we could have language for you next week. I think there's lots of robust discussions already happening. So it's more about corralling and less about starting from scratch.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you. Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. I just have a couple thoughts and maybe one question. One, I really appreciate that it's a very succinct platform as far as action priorities. I think it's important anytime we're trying to advocate that we think about what's the landscape we're going into. And with a lot of emphasis, I think this go around on trying to make that session as short and tight as possible. I think for us not to recognize that and really pick and choose what we're going to go forward with doesn't do any good to come out with a dozen things if no one and have none of them listened to. I'd rather come out with our top five. Just want to affirm an understanding on the expand tax relief for lower income older adults. The index language. I have spoken to a number of legislators on both sides of the aisle. My understanding is some of the concern around where we would be as a county and probably some of our other top-five county group would be home valuations are very different in the largest counties over other counties. And so some of that pushback on if we want to raise the cap on home value to make this type of tax relief more accessible from our impacted populations, so too with income. So the indexing is recognizing that we, that the bill would consider medium home valuation and median income valuations and create a formula based on that rather than a flat amount.
Yes.
And I will say, one of the folks that I had a conversation with, they were a little bit scratching their heads on how that gets accomplished. So I would just say as background, if you, these are going to be high level in a piece that you're handing out, but if you've got some technical solutions that you can also dig into, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm not even sure if the indexing language as currently written would be easily understood by everybody. So that would be the other comment I had about that. But I appreciate that that's the approach that you're taking because I think it makes a lot of logical sense. And then the corrections, I'm glad to see we're adding the corrections. I noticed in the post-audit report that you shared with us that the selection of counties that the post-audit committee looked at, they looked at three areas. They looked at DMV, they looked at corrections, and they looked at the cost of counties to administer the role of being the purveyor of sending out tax notices for all taxing entities within that area, within that county's jurisdiction. And certainly corrections lags far behind in that post-audit as far as resources from state versus resources from county in order to do that programming. So I'm curious, knowing that that post-audit was done, knowing that we were one of the communities that was looked at in that post-audit. I understand some things around the other funding formula that has some areas of disagreement, depending on what county you're in. But I'm wondering if this, what we learned from post-audit, gives us another pathway just to speak more broadly about corrections funding.
So this is a little confusing because the Legislative Post Audit looked at criminal prosecution. So under the same bucket of public safety, and it still came to the same conclusion, right? That there are, there's a mismatch between state requirements and state funding. But specifically around corrections in the post-audit, not a whole lot of discussion. But I do think we continue to build the case and have data points for showing where there is discrepancy and where we can really lead with actual numbers when we're making cases.
And I would only say about the out-of-home youth placements in House Bill 2329, I think it's, it goes down a pathway in correcting some of the restraints that occurred in Senate Bill 367. But we want to make sure that we're still centering on best practices when we think about maybe some tweaks to that. And then my last question is, I know with what was presented at the Kansas Public Policy Forum yesterday was really a, both sides of the aisle wanting to work on the issue, going at it slightly differently. I came away from that meeting feeling optimistic that there's energy in the room to really do something and energy from both sides of the aisles, more than one county.
Yep.
But I also felt that some of the recommendations, although slightly different in the two different versions that were presented, had enough crossover that maybe in a conference committee, we could see some addressing of that. I just was wondering what your assessment was of that.
I feel the same. I think we're trying to take lots of bites of the apple with this one and seeing where we can get momentum because working with the Kansas Housing Advocacy Network and UCS, there is wide support and evidence-based for all of those proposals.
Thank you. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Erin, I just want to say job well done. I love the presentation you made together. And I agree with everything that you have on here. Can I just say some of the world things for like consolidation in the areas where we have townships where nobody is actually in a public building?
I think so. That's a great point. What I would say is that for the rest of the platform, like the broad guiding principles, the language underneath is intentionally broad to communicate vision and values, but allow us to be responsive to what comes. So, you know, I think you guys discussed next week your zoning board and the potential of a planning zoning consolidation. I would say that the language in here specifically, there's a sentence that says policies that streamline processes for planning and development. If you adopt the platform as is, there would be grounds or cover to work on that.
And I think that's a very smart plan because the more vague that you can put something, the more ability it gives to you to do that. So that, thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
But, you know, just with some of the townships, just the cost of elections and all the...
Sure.
So anyway, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to pile on with what Commissioner Allenbrand said, but I do appreciate this format and glad to see we're coordinating with the other more urbanized counties. Makes a lot of sense. Just a few observations. I would be sensitive to what the other hundred counties view, particularly the fairness in sales tax distribution. I'm not sure what their arguments would be, but I'm trusting that we will work through that strategy before we spring it on them, if you know what I mean.
Absolutely.
The Fully Fund Motor Vehicle Title, I would say arguing for a new fee may not be the best approach. Arguing for more flexibility in the existing fees, indexing some of them to inflation might be a better approach. Could have the same result, but to say a new fee is, might be a hard sell in some quarters. And then finally, on number four, the rental for Housing Safe. I don't know about the other urbanized areas, but I know that the local landlords have in the last year or so been interested in what we do and how we do it. I'd make sure we got their take on it to see if this strategy is not just palatable, but also manageable before we get too far along. So just a few observations. And the Community Corrections Act modernization, I'm with you on that one, Robert.
Thank you. Let's keep going with the proposed changes to the platform.
Great. So just a few, the two proposed additions under Health, Human Services, and Public Safety are just taking last year's action items, broadening the language to still reflect the board's values, but they are not attached to specific legislation that's being advanced this year. That is the exact same, actually, for Maintaining a High Quality of Life, childcare, and World Cup. We had specific asks last year. The last proposed change is giving a little bit more specific examples to the platform item of policies and practices that facilitate fair, safe, and accessible elections. To spell out what we mean by that, not an exclusive list, but some examples of mail-in ballots, grace periods, secure ballot drop boxes, extended early voting, and expanded language access. And then, of course, Medicaid expansion, particularly framed as the ability to offset the property tax burden of some of the critical services that the county provides, such as EMS. So with that, that is the end of the state proposed changes.
Commissioner Hansel.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, I just had a couple of questions. Some of the language that is in the PowerPoint, sorry, thank you. Some of the language and suggestions in the PowerPoint presentation doesn't appear to be the same or included in this red-lined version. For example, under the Fully Fund Motor Vehicle Title and Registration Services, the PowerPoint mentions the, or you, actually, you mentioned the, putting something in there about encouraging the change of the five-year renewal of the Vandy plates and local control of fees. I don't see that wording in there. I just want to make sure I'm very clear on what is going to actually be presented to the legislators. And then also, I think under, there was another one that... Under the the final Transparent, Fair, and Civic Processes, the PowerPoint mentions adding expansion of Medicaid. But I noticed that that's already under the first one, the Health, Human Services, and Public.
You're right. That one is an error. It should be struck from Transparent. It should be under Health. And you are absolutely right. And then the question about motor vehicles, we are still waiting to see the draft bill from the Revisors Office. So working with Senator Blasey, he's indicated the five-year renewal cycle and the local fee. I don't want to publish the specifics until we have, because to Commissioner Ashcraft's point, I agree, adding a fee was not where I thought this would go. But I will say that that is where the consensus seems to be right now with leadership. So I would propose that we keep our stance as whatever gets this fully funded, we're in. Right? And that allows us to ebb and flow and pivot based on what we see come out.
Well, they're probably just fine with our adding a fee as long as they don't have to be responsible for it.
Any other points on the state platform? One more, and just to the point made regarding Medicaid expansion. We had that as a priority area last year. I think it remains a priority for the people of Johnson County and the people of the state of Kansas. One of the things I always like doing every year, this Kansas Speaks survey from Fort Hays State, the Docking Institute. They do a really nice job of getting a statistically valid survey of the state. And one of the things in there, more than 70% of the respondents support expanding Medicaid in Kansas. I imagine that percentage would be higher in Johnson County. We still feel that that is an important thing, whether it be for EMS, for mental health, or otherwise. But at the same time, understand the realities of the session and the legislature and the makeup of the legislature. So I appreciate our willingness to be innovative, to be strategic in how we portray the priorities of our platform. Thank you.
Of course. All right, we ready for the federal government? Well, a quick update before we dive into the platform. I'm sure we all saw, but late last night, President Trump did sign the temporary spending deal, so ended the longest government shutdown, 43 days. So it extends fiscal year '25 levels till January 30th, 2026, but fully funds for the year three agencies, including agriculture, which means that WIC and SNAP are now fully funded for 2026. They will not be at risk again if the federal government shuts down again at the end of January when this continuing spending resolution.
I think that was Charlie Hunt that gave out the yahoo.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Cheers abound. So similar, I think, structure to the federal platform here is focusing our action priorities on legislation that has been introduced and has some momentum behind it. So the first, of course, is continuing to invest federal dollars in the World Cup. There is a bill that Senator Moran has introduced about a year ago that would provide some transportation assistance for World Cup post-regions. In the Senate version of the Transportation Appropriations Bill, they included $78 million for World Cup transit. That amount was not included in the House, but we are going to continue to work on it. The second is supporting the reauthorization and increased funding for the Older Americans Act. This was discussed last week. You know, it has passed Senate Committee, and we're hoping that it will pass the full Senate and then the House. Again, because of the extension and the temporary spending deal, the funding is not at risk right now. It is just extended at current levels. This next year, the Surface Transportation Program is up for reauthorization. This happens every five years. Through our membership with NACO, we are working with the Coalition of Local Officials and Transportation to advocate for primarily increased local control and the ability for project funding to come straight to units of local government, regional planning organizations like MARK. I think this is due to the reality that local governments manage the vast majority of infrastructure, particularly road, bridge, and transit. And so it's most efficient and effective for the money to go where the work is being done. So the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee is chaired by Representative Sam Graves from the Kansas City, Missouri area. Representative Davids also serves on that committee, and he has requested that the House pass this by the end of this calendar year, which we'll see, but we're following it closely. The last proposed action item is again related to housing, a board focus area. There is a bipartisan bill that was passed out of the Senate called the Road to Housing Act. It contains 40 different pieces of legislation. It's pretty massive. The overall aims are to boost housing supply, cut red tape in federal program offerings, and then expand access to affordable mortgage. So it was not included when the House passed their spending bill. So we will see. I do think that there is a lot of support for this piece of legislation. All right, any questions on or discussion on the federal? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, before I do that, I wanted to give a quick update. We talked last week about the flexibility of Medicaid reimbursements for treatment in place. This week, Senator Collins from Maine and Senator Welch from Vermont introduced a bipartisan bill called the CARE Act, Comprehensive Alternative Response to Emergencies. And this would require the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid to have a five-year pilot testing what it looks like to reimburse agencies who treat in place. So we don't know a whole lot yet, like how are they going to define treat in place? We're waiting to get more information before we can really predict what offsetting revenue this would bring to the county. But in terms of the conception, right? I think our MED Act folks are very excited about this and it's something that I would recommend we add specifically to our platform. Now I'm done.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen. And yes, I think we all gave the yahoo when the federal government reopened and appreciate all the efforts that have been made in the meantime to mitigate the impacts of that shutdown on residents here in Johnson County. I think overall... I think overall, the priorities here are apt, primarily the World Cup. Given the unique role of the federal government in safety, security, and transportation, continued support from the federal government in this massive undertaking would be incredibly helpful and, frankly, necessary to make sure that we take advantage of what is the biggest opportunity that's happened to the Kansas City metro region ever. So thank you for prioritizing that and the continued work of Senator Moran, Congresswoman Davids, and others to assist therewith. Questions regarding the federal platform? Comments regarding the federal platform? Let's start with Commissioner Brewer.
A comment and a question. Just clarifying understanding, under the guiding principles under Health and Human Services, we do talk about the Medicaid block grants, and we do reference treatment in place. I think that's the area that we have it. I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a number of different versions, so bear with me. So earlier in your comments, you would move that based on some action that's happening. You would move that out of a guiding principle, and you would put it into an action item.
Yes.
So, and this is probably more a question for the body than it is for you, Ms. Aaron, but I'm curious, knowing about what just happened at the federal level with the signing of the most recent funding bill that expires in January, and what is in it and what is not in it. I don't know if it's appropriate, you know, at the state level, it's appropriate for us to be supportive of Kansas as a non-expansion state, to become an expansion state. That's been a standing platform issue for a number of years now. I don't know if it's appropriate for county to weigh in on whether or not we'd like to see the Affordable Care Act subsidies that have been in place, that were put in place, quite frankly, during the pandemic, but have also attributed to the Affordable Care Act to be a little bit more affordable if it's appropriate for this body to weigh in and include that, whatever stand we would have as a body within that Medicaid statement. It's a question. I don't know. I just didn't see it, so I'm asking.
Well, thank you, Warren, for the discussion, for sure. At this time, we'll go to Commissioner Allen Brand, and then we'll continue discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Again, very well done. I like that it's short and to the point. I think that gets more of their attention, so I appreciate that. So will you keep an eye on, you know, we had monies that we were able to get through grants for the airport, for some bridges, and 911, there was some equipment and stuff like that. So we'll just keep an eye on that to see if some of that will reappear again.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that is one of the reasons for the length of the rest of the platform, is because it's kind of marching orders, right, to our folks in DC? Like, here's the language, here's the key words you need to be searching for when grant opportunities come up.
Thank you.
Other questions on the federal platform? Well, then let's return to Commissioner Brewer's question regarding the ACA subsidies. I think, given that it's a new topic, I agree with you that it is important to keep as many people as possible with attainable health insurance. That impacts our ability here in Johnson County to provide service, and it impacts the quality of life for many folks within our community. What I'd be interested in seeing is some particular language, what that looks like. Or I know there's been at least some discussions of concepts of a plan for healthcare, and maybe language encouraging an alternative plan. If ACA is truly not the best plan that the federal government can come up with, encouraging the support of a plan that would provide health insurance to working families here in Johnson County. So I think it comes down to language for me, but I think you're right. That definitely has an impact on those here in Johnson County.
We can prepare that and bring it back next week.
Okay. So-
We, the Department of One.
Well, there are a wealth of resources here that can assist that legislative department.
That's right.
So at this time, I entertain a motion, or a series of motions. Do you want one motion or two? Just one? Fair enough.
Can we bring this all as one item? Is that okay?
Well, then I would move that we bring the state and federal platforms for Johnson County, Kansas to action for November 20, 2025, with the additions and subject to the revisions as we have discussed during this committee of the whole. And ask for a second.
Ellen Brand, second.
So moved by the Chair, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Further discussion at this time. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Jeremy Kelly.
Aye. That's six in favor, none against. That consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen. Thank you, Mr. Israel. Sorry we didn't get to hear too much from you.
Hey, Zach.
Hey, hey, everybody. No problem. Great to see you, Jeremy Kelly, everyone.
Well, and I will note, on the consent agenda today, we renewed our contract with the Ferguson Group. We think your team does fantastic work, and we appreciate the return on investment that that has brought for Johnson County, and look forward to good years ahead. Thank you very much, and the government's open. Get back to work.
Will do. Thank you so much, Chairman. We look forward to working with the county over the next year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we'll adjourn this committee of the whole. We'll allow the clerk to change the technology and take an approximately five-minute break, and then start-
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If you wouldn't mind taking your seats, we're going to get started with the Committee of the Whole. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We are here for a Committee of the Whole session regarding recommendations from our work group on the use and distribution of opioid settlement funds. I'll note for the record that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Fast. Therefore, we have a quorum and look forward to hearing a presentation regarding the Johnson County Opioid Settlement Funds Work Group recommendations. With that, we will turn the microphone over to our Deputy County Manager, Julie Cairns. We will hear a presentation and have opportunities for discussion. Ms. Cairns?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Because of the setup today, I'm going to be presenting from my seat, and I'd like to invite Sierra Wright to stand at the podium because we're going to tag-team the presentation. But with the setup, this was the easiest for our folks. So with that, I will dive right in. Am I controlling the presentation? Oh, Sierra gets to. Okay, very good. Sure.
Oh, that's okay. Why don't you say? I'll give you a look.
Thank you for that. All right. So back on March 27th, earlier this year, the Board did create a work group to look more closely and holistically at the opioid settlement dollars that were flowing through the state of Kansas, including those being allocated by this body. The work group was consisting of Commissioner Janay Hanslick, Becky Fast, and Julie Brewer. And the work group met four different times in April, May, June, and their final meeting was in August. You might recall, we had this presentation scheduled for October, but based on some calendaring issues, we got moved back a little bit. So today's presentation by staff will review the process and the information that the work group considered and their recommendations. I note that an executive summary was included in your packet that had additional information. Oh, back one more, I'm sorry. So as a reminder, we've been working on the opioid settlement dollars since 2019 as an organization, and it was in 2021 that we joined in with a memorandum of understanding that would determine how the dollars flowed through Kansas specifically. So this was in agreement with the Kansas Attorney General, League of Municipalities, Kansas Association of Counties. And this is a chart that probably looks familiar. We've been talking about it for a while, but basically, the Kansas Fight Addiction Board, that was the $340 million, the total that we expected to get into the state. And under the Kansas Fight Addiction Act, 75% of those dollars are being distributed by the Kansas Fight Addiction Board, and they hired the Sunflower Foundation to distribute those dollars. The 25% comes over to the other side in the Municipalities Fight Seduction Board, with counties receiving 12.5% and all of the cities receiving 12.5%. So this is just the framework that's specific to Kansas. So information and background on Johnson County's funding as an organization, we are anticipated to receive $9.63 million over the 17-year settlement window. And that was the newest update we received from the Attorney General last year. There are settlements that continue to happen, but as of right now, those are the dollars that we believe we're working with. We've received to date almost $3.8 million, and the Board, based upon staff recommendations, made allocations in '24, '25, and '26. And the work group was focused on allocations for fiscal year '27 and beyond, with a current cash balance of $2.2 million. This is the information that the work group reviewed as to those fundings that took place in '24, '25, and '26. Beyond those allocations, the Board also had provided $100,000 per year to United Community Services in the form of local grants, and $100,000 annually to the Prevention and Recovery Coalition, which we'll talk a little bit more about. So when the work group formed, and they were looking for the lay of the land as to how money's been flowing so far into Johnson County as a community, so that we could look and determine where we should focus our efforts as we look forward more strategically. So the first piece that we looked at was the Kansas Fight Addiction, part of the equation, which again is 75% of Kansas settlements. In 2025, Kansas Fight Addiction Board allocated about $14.5 million. Of that, about $4 million touched the Johnson County community in some way, shape, or form, that their grant applicants had said that the money would be used either statewide or within a region that encompassed recipients that would benefit within Johnson County. When we looked specifically and exclusively at dollars that were awarded through Kansas Fight Addiction to Johnson County community, it was $1.8 million. So when we look at percentages of what we are in the state of Kansas, the ones that touched Johnson County was 28%, those specifically allocated to Johnson County was about 13%. So we were looking at, have we received our fair share, or what we would have expected to receive as part of that allocation, was one data point. Johnson County specifically, as an organization, was awarded $800,000, or 5%. And you can see on the screen that that award dollars went to the 10th Judicial District Court Mental Health Programs for Bridging the Gap and Expanding Family Wellness. I do want to note that the Kansas Fight Addiction Board did commission a statewide needs assessment that was conducted by KU. That report was finalized and issued in August of this year. They have not yet released what their funding program looks like for fiscal year 2026, and we're getting very late in that game. So we're anticipating at this point that they'll probably do a similar process for '26 that they did in '24 and '25, which is just put out a grant application form and let people apply. But as you can see in the last bullet point on the screen, we believe that moving forward, that they're going to be looking at a more strategic allocation of 10% to 20% for short-term needs, 65% to 85% for longer term, and then 10% to 20% for less traditional, more innovative. So again, they got this information later in '25, and so we think that they'll be implementing the results of their statewide needs assessment in probably '27. Additionally, the other information that the work group considered was the money flowing through the Municipalities Fights Addiction, which was 25% of the settlement. Again, 12.5% to counties, 12.5% to cities. We had used from the beginning, we wanted to utilize the services and the proven relationship we had with United Community Services. They set up a coordinated competitive grant process that works alongside the Alcohol Tax Fund to distribute opioid dollars. We currently have the cities of Leawood, Lenexa, Olathe, Overland Park, Prairie Village, and Shawnee committing either some or all of their municipality dollars that they're receiving into this grant program coordinated by UCS. And we've participated at a level of $100,000 to date. When we looked at 2025 awards, we again committed $100,000, and our departments, agencies, and offices were awarded over $263,000. We had awards given to our Corrections Department and Mental Health Department. Next, I'd like to let Sierra talk a little bit about our Prevention and Recovery Coalition and the information that the work group considered in this area.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sierra Wright, here on behalf of Tim Dewees, and going to share a bit about something that is probably familiar to you, and that's the Prevention and Recovery Coalition. So you might recall that in March of 2022, the Coalition formed really as a result of the alarming rate of deaths by fentanyl poisonings and overdoses that we were seeing within Johnson County. And most recently, in the past three years, the Coalition has grown to include members of diverse sectors, so we're fairly well-represented. And that's something that's very important to the Coalition, because we truly believe that it's going to take a community response from all sides of this. It's not just one sector. It's not just a mental health response. It's going to be able to successfully help reduce the number of lives and both fatal and non-fatal overdoses. And then with your gracious support, as Julie mentioned, we've continued to be allocated around $100,000, so half of that going towards the staff time for the Prevention and Recovery Coalition, and the other half going towards those initiatives and areas, basically deliverables from the Coalition. And so really with that, wanting to recognize that we've been able to be fairly flexible and really collaborative with some of our other partners. You might recall talking about matching gracious donations from DECA in terms of providing naloxone, as well as keeping clean for COOP has been a wonderful partner for the You Never Know So as we started to really think about where we wanted to go in terms of mapping out where opioid settlement fund dollars have gone within Johnson County, it's a bit overwhelming at first, right? Because there's several pots of money available and thinking about, yeah, where did all of those dollars go within the county? And we really landed on, together as a work group, of thinking about utilizing this concept of the continuum of care. So that is a concept from the Institute of Medicine that really lays out these four areas, so promotion, prevention, treatment, and recovery. So essentially, thinking about behavioral health, and in this context, more specifically, substance use disorder on a continuum. You can see that on the far left, thinking about promotion, that would be the earliest possible intervention, and really just those things within a community of trying to encourage healthy behaviors for all, right? And then when you think about prevention, really those being things that we are trying to do before something becomes a problem. And then within the treatment domain, fairly self-explanatory, but thinking about, that could be things within the opioid space of drug or alcohol counseling. It could also look like medication-assisted treatment. It could be inpatient or outpatient, depending upon an individual's needs. And then lastly, thinking about recovery is a huge piece of this, right? Because not only do we want folks to get treatment, but we want them to sustain that and to stay in recovery and go on to live fulfilled, healthy lives. So I know that this next slide is incredibly busy with information. But so we really kind of adapted that continuum of care model in thinking about, okay, how can we map this out for Johnson County? And so it's color-coordinated, so you can see that the orange color matches there with promotion. And these are really thanks to partners sharing information from the various funding sources. So we received information from KFA, as Julie mentioned earlier, as well as our partners at United Community Services with their substance use funds. That includes both alcohol tax, pardon me, this does not include those alcohol tax funds, but includes the opioid settlement fund portion of that work. And then we also have local municipalities who also entered into their own agreements to receive opioid settlement funds. Those allocations are depicted here. So as you can see, promotion has a very small sliver of the pie, right? Prevention and recovery are not long after that in terms of funding amounts. And you can see that treatment, understandably so, is funded with the highest amount, right, nearing $4.8 million of all the funds allocated going to treatment. And that makes sense in many senses, right? Because we need folks who are in need of treatment for their addiction to be receiving that treatment. However, I think when we think about it on the continuum, it sort of speaks to the notion that we're still reactive as opposed to being preventative in this front. And so I think Johnson County, we're really in an exciting position that we can shift from being more reactive. And treatment is always going to have a place and always a need there. But I think an important piece is looking at, from this work group, we can see where those gaps are within Johnson County. And I think that that helps us to sort of guide that we need to not only help prevent folks from having a substance use disorder, but also recognizing that we have not necessarily funded the recovery domain to the extent that could be helpful, because as we know, recovery is something that can last throughout the duration of an individual's lifespan, and they can come in and out of that. And so making sure that there's adequate funding for recovery to help folks stay in that is critically important.
Thank you, Sierra. I wanted to mention that this chart, when you look at the executive summary, has two additional pages, and it just adds a little bit more information under each of these categories as to how those dollars were spent. So for purposes of the presentation, this was already busy enough, but in your executive summary, it has a little bit more information. So once we looked at gathering all of the data that the work group had requested, and with the help of Sierra and the mental health team, had put together where the current investments happening on the continuum, we focused on the work group recommendations. So the first recommendation coming out of the work group was adopting the continuum of care model as the model that we would use as our guiding framework moving forward over the years in programming the opioid settlement dollars. And specifically, the recommendation is to prioritize, as Sierra mentioned, the prevention and recovery part of the wheel, or part of the continuum of care, as that is the area that we feel the most opportunity lies. The second recommendation is to maintain the annual investment to United Community Services. The group had robust conversation about how we should be getting the opioid settlement dollars best into the community, and specifically with our nonprofits. And the discussion, they considered whether or not to increase or decrease the allocation, whether or not we should be encouraging our departments, agencies, and offices to participate in that grants award process. And at the end of the day, the work group recommendation is to, again, maintain the $100,000 annual commitment, because it does strengthen our position to support local grant opportunities for the community. But also to continue to encourage our departments, agencies, and offices to apply for those grant fundings, because we are well-positioned to provide these services countywide. And we think that when feedback from some of our city partners, they know that their smaller allocations won't be able to perhaps have the same impact as if they join together and let some of the more countywide efforts thrive. Recommendation number three was to also sustain the $100,000 annual allocation to the Prevention and Recovery Coalition. There was discussion, and staff had presented earlier in the year, perhaps doubling that allocation or doubling down in investment with them. But the way that these recommendations are framed is that recommendation three and four are separate. So recommendation three is to sustain the annual allocation and let them continue to support that half-time staff member and pursue and amplify impacts through programs and partners. The fourth recommendation is looking to then strengthen the PRC's role within Johnson County as we allocate our dollars. So the recommendation is to formally designate PRC, led by the Mental Health Department, as the county's coordinating body for the Johnson County Organization's opioid settlement strategy for 2027 and beyond. We believe, or the work group believed, that they were well-positioned to provide strategic planning for the remaining dollars, that they're already working with a number of partners, and can help us better position ourselves to be successful gaining access to those KFA dollars that we have not yet been overly successful in obtaining. So the concept is that they, for '27 and beyond, would not focus so much on one-term allocations, but they would work on a strategic program, bring it back for board approval, and then provide annual progress reports. So went through that pretty quickly, but hopefully you had a chance to review the executive summary in advance. And Sierra and I would be glad to stand for any questions.
Ms. Cairns, thank you very much, and thank you, Sierra, for all the work that the Coalition is doing, and their willingness to potentially take on additional work on behalf of Johnson County, specifically for these opioid settlement funds. I'm just going to dive into specific questions and then invite members of the work group to provide their thoughts. On recommendation number two, the investment to UCS and the encouragement of county offices to seek funding. Am I correct that seeking that funding is seeking that funding directly from UCS, or are departments going to be asking the Coalition to designate funds from the opioid settlement funds?
I'll take that. They would be able to be grant recipients through the UCS process.
Okay, thank you. That is great. Questions, comments? We'll start with Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, job well done. This is a really detailed report, and thanks to the commissioners that served on this committee. So I'm assuming that UCS, that every year they'll give a report of where the money went. So we'll hear updates on that. The chair already asked one question, so that needs to be...
Commissioner Allen Brand, would you turn on your microphone? Thank you very much.
Do you want me to repeat everything?
No, go ahead.
Please don't. And then, so a couple other questions. I see where we have designated money to mental health, which I totally 100% agree with that. Was there ever any input from the Sheriff's Department on what they might need in the jails of funds, or is that somewhere, and I just missed it?
No, I appreciate the question and the chance to clarify. So when we looked at program the fiscal year '24, '25, and '26, we used an internal staff process where all of the departments were able to share what their needs were. And you might recall, the Sheriff's Office was funded for some one-time expenditures in 2024. So what we'd be looking at moving forward is that any department would be working with the PRC as they're looking to do more of a holistic, strategic allocation of the remaining opioid dollars. But those departments have been made aware of the presentation and the recommendation.
And then, this is probably a loaded question, but so homelessness, would it be appropriate for some of this money to be able to give to help for those in short-term that need to have assistance?
So there are very specific requirements for how the dollars can be programmed, but there's a lot of cross-pollination of some of these issues. Certainly, there's a lot of nonprofits that apply to UCS for programming. And they also, and we recently, I think at the recommendation of Commissioner Brewer, held a meeting with nonprofits to help them better understand how to get money directly from the Kansas Fight Addiction Board as well. So we can help the nonprofits know how to access those dollars.
Great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Ashcraft, because I think he originally was the person who was very adamant that we find a framework for how to utilize this money in the most effective and efficient way. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank Ms. Cairns and Sierra for the presentation. I think you did a great job of summarizing what were some somewhat disparate conversations at times. One thing I do want to point out is on page 11, if you look underneath that continuum, there are five principles, and those are from the Johns Hopkins put those together. They are five principles to inform state and local governments in regard to the spending and allegation of these opioid funds. And one of the things I think is important to mention is... to, to mention is that as the PRC is putting together their plan for the use of these funds, the, these are, these are the, the, the kind of guiding principles. And I think it's, it's especially, it goes back to what Commissioner Ashcraft had originally said, that the, the first principle is to spend the money to save lives. That's, that's what these funds are for. Use evidence to guide the spending, invest in youth prevention, focus on racial equality and develop a fair and transparent decision-making process, which I think is what we are doing. So I wanted to mention those because I think they're very critical and they're, they're recognized nationally as principles to follow as we look at the, to the best and most effective way of using these opioid funds. And I, I know we talked about, and you mentioned it a bit, Sierra, but really focusing on the prevention and recovery needs because that's where
Our gaps are.
the biggest need is that it's, that's unmet. So thank you for putting this together.
Commissioner Burr, yes.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate, I want to give my thanks to Chair for creating this subcommittee and allowing us some of that space and time to have a more in-depth conversation and, and start to formulate a vision forward. When I think about this process, I think ultimately our role as commissioners is to direct policy. But in, in order to do that, we needed a good framework and process to understand how we could best direct policy. So, and I appreciate Ms. Cairns and, and Sierra's presentation today to really over, to give that big picture because really what we're trying to think about is we were looking at the county as a whole, not just the departments within Johnson County, and say, as a county as a whole, with the three bigger buckets of dollars, the state dollars that come in from Kansas Fights Addiction, the collaborative community dollars that our Johnson County government and, and are some of our jurisdictions direct to the Substance Use Fund that is facilitated by UCS, and then the dollars we retain within the county to deploy within county services. How is, how are those three buckets impacting and how are we, when you look at the slide number 11, the reason, part of the reason we have those wedges of the pie is, big picture, the statute that governs the use of the opioid settlement funds say, these are the areas in which you can use the funds. And it's hard for us to do good policy if we didn't understand where the dollars currently were going and what, which wedges of the pie were getting a lot of love and which wedges were, we could find gaps or, or areas that, that we could make a measurable impact. So I feel, I feel that it sets us up for a more, what I want to say, informed way to have some policy. And I appreciate the process of bringing in the, the Prevention Coalition to really take within the county services, that integration approach of working with all the partners for whom they have an area of expertise to provide some of these services. So I believe the expectation is when a recommendation for how to use these funds come forward, it's coming forward not as piecemeal within each department, but as a unit. They may be very different services, but there'll be a through line of why these services are being recommended and what gaps they're, they're meeting.
Correct.
And I think that's going to give us a better handle. I would imagine now we have to fast forward to the budget process, then they become a line item of, of revenue within that department's budget. So when we're looking at budgets, we already know, here's the big picture, here's your piece of the big picture, and here's how it shows up in our budget. Am I describing that accurately?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that, you know, when we first started talking about this, we had talked about that $600,000 per year because we were going to have a smoothing approach. Under this revised recommendation, I think that the Coalition would have available to them the remaining dollars that we anticipate to have so that they can be working on perhaps longer-term investments. So it could be a program that they bring back that will take five years, you know, that they want to invest in something. So we will deal with the budget side of that because we know how much revenue is going to come in under the opioid settlement dollars. We will work with them once they have their plan formulated as to how to handle that budget piece. But yes, certainly, if it's going to go to a department, we can work with them through that. But it could be an initiative that they're going to do with one of the partners in the Coalition that comes back. So I think some of that has yet to be baked, but, but the way you're outlining it in theory is how it will work.
So I wanted to lay that groundwork for one reflection back on this whole process. And I'm glad you brought up the ability for us with the county dollars that stay within the county for county departments or, or initiatives in which the county is a partner, that we could do multi-year funding. We talk a lot at the dais and we talk a lot in, in this ecosystem around substance use and recovery, around transformational programming. And anyone who's in the implementation role for transformational programming knows that it's really hard to do that if you're doing it based on funding that's only available 12 months at a time, that you don't have maybe a multi-year grant where you have a vision, you have a process, and transformational change doesn't happen in 12 months. It may be 24 or 36 months. And I think it's so important that we create that runway for that to happen so that we can achieve the outcomes that we want. And we know from the state Kansas Fight Addictions Fund that that, after their research and study, that's really where they're looking to go with the bulk of their dollars, is looking for community collaborative multi-year initiatives. So my request would be, we are going to be doing that internally as we think about our own dollars and applying for state dollars. I think UCS is a good organization to work with collaboratively externally
Absolutely.
to continue to come alongside our, our other agency partners so that they can also maximize those state dollars as those dollars turn into multi-year dollars so that we can see a, a large-scale transformational change through intentional planning and execution.
Great suggestion. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to be a little bit, bit of a pain real quick. I think I have a solution for our raising hands and lowering hands. The, the chairman needs to have a panel that has a row of lights that come on in the order of the commissioners that push their hand raising because it's tough when you're the chairman of trying to keep track and seeing who's raising their hand and who's not raising their hand. But I also think it's important that, that there should be an order, if we're going to do it this way, of the people that raise their hands should be spoken to or asked in the order that they request. That's me. So anyway, that's my being a pain. On, on, also on the continuum, continuum of care on page 11, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the allocations, how those allocations are made. There's a formula that you're using in order to make the allocations. For instance, in treatment, Oval and Park, $816,000, City of Merriam, $38,000. Is there a formula that makes those decisions on how much is being allocated or how's that done?
So what you'll see here, and I'll let Sierra supplement my answer. So each of our cities are receiving that 12 and a half percent directly through the settlement dollars. But then we also have cities who could be applying for grants through Kansas Fight Addiction or UCS.
Right, right.
So everyone, you know, has three different opportunities to receive funding. So this was a collaboration with all of our partners to say, in 2025, what did you receive and how did you plan to spend it? So that's how we were able to allocate. So for example, many of our cities are using their dollars for their co-responder program. So that's why that's in that treatment bucket because it's an, it's an after the fact, but please expand.
No, I think you did a really nice job with that, Julie. And Commissioner, to answer your question a bit more, you know, certainly our partners shared and we so appreciate them providing that information to us, but it could be, like, I can't say for certain that they have actually spent those dollars thus far, but that, as Julie mentioned, how they intend to at the time when they shared that information out with us.
And, and so, for instance, Shawnee, I know they have a co-responder program. Do they just not request any funding like other cities through this program? Or I would think every city that had a co-responder program, if they're being able to out, be allocated money through this fund, would jump on it.
So it'd be cities entering into the litigation, right, process?
Yeah. So each city is a little different. And so Shawnee, for example, they put $112,000 into the UCS fund. So some cities put all or part of their opioid 12 and a half percent into UCS so it could be leveraged with a wider impact. Other cities have kept more of their own dollars and then they've told us that they're spending it on their co-responder program. And I think that's why this mapping, it, it looks like it might be pretty simple. It was actually very complicated because of all of the different places money is flowing from and to within the program. So we, as Johnson County, we're a direct recipient from the state. We also apply and receive money through Kansas Fight Addictions and we apply and receive money from UCS. So it's the same really with our cities. This was just meant to capture in 2025, if I'm the city of Lenexa, how much money am I spending that I've received from these different places of my opioid money and where do I plan to spend it from?
Okay.
And the executive summary, the, the written report takes this report and you can see under the city of Lenexa, they indicated what more specifically they spent it on.
And Commissioner Myers, just to expand upon that, so potentially those cities, because a lot of them do provide funding then to UCS for that larger pot, those would be reflected under SUF. So those designations throughout, like, it's not necessarily itemized out, but in theory, as Julie said, the city of Shawnee would be providing funding going towards programs that receive the SUF funding, if that makes sense.
And I need to stand corrected. Shawnee, I think it was 112 for one program, but the OSF was 70. So yes. And we're glad to sit and, and go through more information. But this was the attempt to map all of those different funding sources and where they're currently going in the allocations.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, opioids are a scourge. I, I get that. And I appreciate this effort. And Ms. Cairns, I am struggling with the flow of funds. And by what I just heard you say, I think it's a struggle for you too. So I, just a few questions. If I'm understanding correctly, we're going to get about, well, short of $10 million over the next 17 years, maybe a little more, maybe a little less.
Correct.
Slide six, we've committed or are committing 1.6 million already. So that's about 16%. The, the ongoing contribution to UCS, $100,000 a year over the next 10 years is another 16%. So a third of that $10 million has already been committed. So we have a, we, we have five or six, seven million over, over 12 years, 17 years. And then I look at slide 11 and what, what that looks like to me is our segmented expenditures spread among a lot of various departments. And what I'm trying to figure out, and Commissioner Hanslick, I very much appreciate you pointing out the, the guiding principles. And I, I want to believe it's captured in there, but I'm trying to figure out what we plan to accomplish with this remaining five or six million dollars over 17, the next 17 years and how all of these agencies are going to contribute to that. And, you know, what the baseline is now, whether it's number of deaths or hospitalizations or addictions. I mean, I don't know what the metrics are, but, and how this best accomplishes that. I'm just, I'm just, I, I can't get it. But I will say, I do like the concept of a continuum of care. I mean, that, that makes sense. But to have it spread so thinly amongst all these different actors, rather than say focusing on choke points in the addiction process and focusing heavy energy by, by providers, a provider, I, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling because I just don't want to spend the money so we make, have short-term views and short-term activities and not get to the, the core of opioid addiction and catastrophe.
Yes.
And I, I don't, I don't feel that. I'm, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hanslick, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I think, first of all, I think there's maybe a little confusion around what this chart is. This is, this chart is simply showing what is already being invested
What is.
this year. This is not the recommendation of specific amounts of money. This is just showing, here's where a lot of this funding is already going in our community. And that's why in our discussions, we had, we talked about, it looks like the areas where we could have the most impact with this money is in the prevention area and in the recovery area because there's already a lot going on in the treatment area. So with that, with those two areas being the focus and then also using the, the five, those five principles, the PRC has been tasked with then presenting a plan and, and, you know, a lot of it's going to depend on what, what is available
Right.
and what are the specific priorities in a given year, that then they will make that recommendation
Sure.
as to how that money for that year is allocated based on all of this work that's been done. So I don't know if that helps.
No, I, I understand and I appreciate the clarification, but the, the math works out to be less than half a million dollars a year.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
No, is it more than that? That we have control over? That we have control and, well, that we, that we have control over and how we best effectively use that. And it, it comes across as, as spreading it too thin, rather than focusing on critical choke points to impact prevention. And I mean, as a novice, I would say prevention is much more valuable than recovery. I'm not saying recovery is not important, but to actually attack opioid addiction, prevention, I would argue, has more value than recovery. So I've got some specific thoughts on that, but I see Ms. Cairns wanted to make a point first.
Yes, if I could, Chairman Commissioner. I think that one of the important takeaways is it may only be $400,000 per year for the next 13 years. But with the work of the PRC, they would be able to take that $400,000 per year and not only invest it, perhaps in only one program. That, that could be the recommendation that comes back. But they're going to use that investment to also be able to leverage the Kansas Fight Addictions dollars that we think we should have more access to and multiply and amplify those investments by bringing those dollars back to Johnson County.
Good point. So a couple of quick points and maybe a question in there too. Commissioner Hanslick mentioned the Johns Hopkins model and I'm glad she did in pointing out the guiding principles here. And I think one of the reasons that those guiding principles were established was because less than 3% from the Tobacco Master Settlement was spent on prevention and cessation. And so the focus on prevention and recovery or cessation is a great guiding light, I think, for our focus on the money. And we, I also want to give a little bit of grace to
And we, I also want to give a little bit of grace to the professionals here with our love of metrics being one thing. We won't know exactly where a compelling need may be in 2029 or 2030 or 2035, and so I don't want to get too prescriptive on utilizing funds when they could otherwise be spent saving lives. And while I don't know that these five principles were in any particular order, and I'm happy to be corrected if Johns Hopkins did put an order to the five, but saving lives has, to me, got to be the top principle. And so while I appreciate that prevention has an impact there, I don't want to discount recovery. Those who have had their lives ruined by the scourge of opioids and by the decisions made by many who are subject to criminal cases because of the actions they have taken have ruined lives. And those who are in recovery are fighting every single day to save their own lives, and providing resources to do so is a great use of this resource. And I'm proud of what we've done thus far, and I hope that the focus on recovery doesn't get lost in the effort to provide resources toward prevention. One of the things I know saves a lot of life is naloxone. And at the same time, I realize, and I've heard, haven't seen it firsthand, that we have provided naloxone to a lot of different organizations within Johnson County, including the library. But if you go to the library today, they don't have naloxone because they can't afford it. That could save lives today. So I want to make sure that we are recognizing the impacts of dollars spent effectively for recovery and saving lives and making those decisions with haste so that folks have an opportunity, folks who are in recovery have an opportunity for fulfilling life and making sure that that is a guiding priority. Commissioner Brewer?
Yes, just a couple responses to some of the thoughts that Commissioner Ashcraft So we have to know where we are on the funding to know where we want to go with the funding. And so I feel like this mapping process that we see on slide 11 gives us a grounding on where we currently are as a community, not just as a government, you know, as county government with the dollars that we directly control. And I think part of the goal of the committee was, as you noted, Commissioner Ashcraft, when we think of just our allocation, it doesn't feel like a lot of money, right? But if we are maximizing all of the resources between what the cities bring in, what the county brings in, and what we can bring in through the state process, and then almost as a footnote on this chart could have also been, there's also through the Alcohol Tax Fund that has many of the same types of services built into statute around education and promotion, prevention, and treatment. That statute is quiet, is very skinny around recovery, whereas the Opioid Settlement Fund statutes gave more language to recovery. And so that's why UCS and the community process was very intentional in taking those two buckets of money, and how can we braid that into a single application, still track the money separately as by state statute, but recognize that agencies could use both buckets for services. Now we've got a macro system, and that's a lot more money coming into the process. I feel the report today does give us some actionable things that we can vote on today, and that is affirming if we would like to give direction to the Prevention Coalition as they are working with the internal departments, that we want to see a proposal that maybe focuses on those dollars around prevention and recovery, because that's what's coming out of today's summary report, is after analyzing the macro environment of where dollars and services are, these are the two areas where we feel more resources need to be. That could be direction this body as a policy could give, and then that's what the Prevention Coalition would be focusing on as they come back with recommendations. And I will push back on one item that you discussed, and that is, I feel like we've spent, the dollars are spread out a lot, and can't we just take a couple choke points? I will say, in my 30-plus years of experience in working on health and human service issues, that it can be very complicating. Often, it's the "and" and not the "or." It's how we braid a variety of services together to create a whole-person treatment that has more long-term success than if we think we can have one solution or funnel all our dollars through one organization that can meet all the needs. So I'm comfortable with knowing that we, fortunately, in our community, have a number of expert resources that can work together to address whole-person treatment, recovery, prevention, and move us forward. So that's kind of where my mindset is at.
Right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Brewer. I appreciate and think I understand the approach. It's the continuum of care approach. It's well-established, okay? And I don't doubt that. I think what I'm fundamentally trying to grasp is, what is the baseline in terms of opioids' impact and there are any number of bad things that we can outline? How will these efforts reduce or eliminate those opioid impacts? And is this kind of broad approach, and I know we can't control it in large measure, but we have $9 million or so that we can focus, and I don't want to eliminate recovery and treatment efforts, those need to go on, but we have this unique opportunity with opioids to, once in a generation, focus that resource at a critical point or two, I mean, I don't know what that is, but to attack it rather than spreading it out and minimizing the core components of opioid addiction. And you all have studied this much more closely than I have, but I look at this and I just, I'm just not there. I'm sorry.
And Commissioner Ashcraft, I wanted to comment, if I may. I so appreciate your consideration of wanting to address root causes, because I think that's really what you're speaking to in terms of where can we be most effective. And so I just wanted to share that, you know, we have a particular work group within the coalition specific to addressing root causes, and, you know, certainly all of these things would need to get passed through our leadership team. But one of the issues, I think, in particular, that within Johnson County and across the nation that we're seeing as a struggle as it relates to, you know, there are a multitude of factors that lead an individual to start exploring substances or ultimately to become addicted, but I think one of the things that we do know that I think has a strong space within prevention is providing information and awareness and safe alternatives for our young people when it comes to social media, because I think that that piece in particular, it turns into a lot of the mental health symptoms that we see from today's youth translating from, you know, experiences that they have had online on social media platforms, whatever that may be, as well as then turning to social media as our law enforcement, folks are well aware of as a platform that they're exploring, getting and obtaining illegal substances from that. And so I think, you know, I can't speak to this getting passed through the leadership team today, but I know that that's an important issue that that work group has taken up, is how can we, as soon as possible, develop a campaign to increase and get knowledge and information to help prevent and equip our youth with the right pro-social activities that are needed instead of that.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you. I think, I wish there was one agency we could give all this money to and know that at the end of this, whatever it is, how many years, 17 years, they could come back and say, with that money, we were able to prevent X number of deaths. I wish we could do that, but that's not possible, and that was part of the process we went through as a work group, is looking at this to see, as you very succinctly said, that different agencies have parts of this. And we, by focusing on the prevention and recovery, we are helping to support a more robust, holistic approach, knowing that there isn't one agency that can do it all. And I do know that each of these agencies have very high and required standards for measuring their outcomes, and I'm sure that we'd be able to access that and get that information. But to be able to focus and just say, let's just give the money to this one thing, and it's going to meet all these, all of these principles and have a measurable outcome, it's just not possible.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I just want to say that coming from having a younger brother who started on drugs at 14, it's not just one place, it's all those things in place.
Yes.
He died from an overdose in young age. I wish, you know, the Youth Crisis Center, the Zero Reasons Why, we have so many things in place to give the money all, I mean, I'm just saying, from my personal experiences and what I've seen being involved with the county programs, how important it is to distribute that money. And I see UCS being a neutral party distributing funds, which I think it makes it difficult if it all went to the county, for someone in the county to make that decision. So I really feel very comfortable and wish these were all in play. When I was growing up, I'm sure my entire family, if my parents were alive, the struggles we went through, I wished I would have had all those services. So I want to congratulate you, and I just, I feel very, very comfortable. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
So anybody have any more substantive comments before we move to direction at this point? Okay. So what I would like to do is move that we, for the recommendation from the Johnson County Opioid Settlement Funds Work Group to the November 20th, 2025 Action Agenda, we start there and ask for a second.
Second, Hanslick.
So moved by myself, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Anything folks want to see before next week on action? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as a matter of process, I will support it moving forward. Maybe I will have an opportunity to be better educated by Ms. Karens before next week, is it next week?
Yep.
Yeah, so I would appreciate that.
Well, seeing no further questions at this time, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
All right, six in favor and none against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
All right. Well, thank you all very much, and thank you to the work group for your efforts here, they're much appreciated. Thank you to our presenters today. This committee, the whole, is now adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.